All with me, no order, please rise so we can say the pleasant believers. A pleasant believer is to declare the United States of America into the Republic of what you stand as, one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice. Please be seated. Start out with a roll call. Alderman Smith, Alderman Quinn, she will be here tonight. Alderman Snyder.
Here.
Alderman Saunders, she will not be here tonight. Alderman Simpson.
Present.
Alderman Oswald.
Present.
We have a form. Moving right along, first thing we have is review and approval of the minutes. We have both minutes for the August 21st special meeting and the August 28th regular meeting.
Okay. Um, I noticed on, I think it was online 128, 127, 128, Greg's not mentioned as being present, making a vote.
Okay. Line 128. I'm not either.
Oh, okay, no, I'm sorry, Jason, you're not.
Who? Interesting. The motion was made by Alderman Simpson and seconded by Alderman Quinn, who you're not on here.
No.
Hold the second.
The roll call vote.
Roll call. Roll call what?
On the roll call vote, Jason and Craig were not mentioned as voting.
We need to correct that then.
Yeah.
Okay. So you can't, can you, can you, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the pending adjustments. You agree with them?
Noted adjustments.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the noted adjustments.
Yeah, motion on the floor to approve the minutes with the noted adjustments to the August 21st meeting minutes line 128. Do we have a second?
I'm second.
There's a motion second on the floor to approve the meeting minutes from the August 21st meeting, what the noted changes to line 28. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries. I'm Alderman, that's okay, I'm going to do all 28 special meeting.
I'll move that way for those minutes.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the special board of Alderman meeting held August 28, 25. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion second on the floor to approve the minutes from the special board of Alderman, Alderman meeting held August 28, 25. All favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the minutes are approved. We'll make sure the city clerk makes the corrections to the minutes from the August 28th meeting. Next thing on the agenda is going to be the mayor's report. We had an issue with the tax levy information that was provided to the board during the special meeting. There was an error. We are going to need to get the documentation corrected with the appropriate tax levy information. What had happened is the city must have received a letter and a pro forma from the state auditor's office on July 23rd. Preparation was made for required notifications, public notifications, and the hearing. The city received a updated, an updated letter from the state auditor's office and a new pro forma from the county. And consequently, all of the information didn't get re, re, redone. That's the only way I know how to say it. So there were just a couple of pieces of, a couple of numbers that weren't correct. So what we have to do, as soon as the net gets back, we're going to have to re, republish the public hearing notification. That must be done for a period of seven days prior to the public hearing. And we will have to call a special meeting to get this done. And we need to do it just as fast as we possibly can. I called and talked to the Missouri State Auditor's Office, and they assured me that we will not, we won't be in any trouble with them if we get it to them as soon as we can, hopefully by mid-September, which is going to be a real trick, because we have to have it seven days. So as soon as we get the notification posted, we'll be calling the special meeting. We could, we may come back and visit us later, but we would have to establish that special meeting. I apologize for this. I wish we didn't have to do this, but we don't have a choice.
To this fact.
So if we got it posted on the 9th, we're probably going to have to have a meeting on the 18th. And we'll need four people to be here, four members, four board members.
Before the board meeting.
Yeah, we'll have the hearing before the board meeting and have a special board meeting.
Don't we have a board of adjustments meeting before that meeting too?
I don't know.
I actually discovered it for that day.
Same time?
Um, before the council meetings.
Well, the council, the council meeting is going to be?
The 18th.
Yeah. Well, we can do it.
What time is your adjustments meeting?
I don't remember. And I don't have on my calendar. I just remember she suggesting, because of the variance over on Meadow Drive, or whatever that is.
We could schedule, okay, we could schedule the, we've done this before. We can schedule the public hearing same time as the board meeting. The board meeting to commence on completion of the public hearing.
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yeah.
Because they're going to be here anyway.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, better chance I haven't than that.
All right. So that takes care of that announcement. You have my apologies, I'm not sure what we could have done different, but we'll get that corrected and we won't have any issue. And by the way, I did speak with each of the individual county collectors, Marion Rolls and Monroe. They, they fully understand what happened. They just ask us to get it to them as quick as possible. Okay, moving right along, I did not bring the meeting minutes with me, but I was advised today that the rural, Monroe City area, Rural Park Protection District, in one of their previous meetings, apparently I didn't, I don't have it on here, voted to not, uh, they will not be performing the work for a fireworks display in July of 2026. They voted to not do it, period. Even if someone else bought the fireworks, they still will not do that. They will not be doing the fireworks display, period.
Does it surprise me knowing that the board, people that are involved in that?
Excuse me?
So that surprises me knowing that the board is involved.
Well, you know, and that's, that's their call. There was a concern, and they say one of the reasons was, is that the location in which this had been being done does not meet a state requirement for some criteria where this can be performed at. So consequently, 20, 20, 2026 is a, is a, Quint, Quint? I can't pronounce it.
Yeah, that's it.
250 years.
Oh, wow.
Uh, you know, since the 1776. And I'm going to bring this up at another meeting. Moving right along. I think, anything else that I've got, I'll send out the individual committees vis a the email, I'll move right along. Next thing we have, city, city clerks report, our deputy city clerk, excuse me. Lizzie's unable to be here at this point in time, so Alderman Simpson's going to be kind enough to take notes nice, we'll try to be nice about this. Next on the agenda is the city attorney's report. The city attorney's not going to be here tonight. He did call me to discuss his absence. I advised him that I was unaware of any pressing issues that would require his attendance. Next thing on the agenda is authorized guest speakers, there are none on record. Moving right along to new business. If you look in your packet, you will find somewhere in here the ordinances for the sale of the city properties for separate licenses, Bill 7 through 11, I believe it is. We will not be addressing those tonight, excuse me, 7 through 10. The reason we will not be addressing those is we failed to place them onto the agenda properly. Because it is of some import, whenever you do ordinances, particularly for the sale of property, we have to do this the next, next board meeting on 18th. We'll make sure that it's, that's on the agenda. There is no other new business that I'm aware of unless you are aware of some that I'm not. So we'll be right along to council committee reports, first will be planning and zoning. Next will be parks and recreation. Please step forward.
How are you guys doing? So, of course, I'm your chair of the Parks and Rec, I've been here yet, but we're just trying to make it. So I'm waiting to edit, I've got an extra meeting Tuesday night, and we plan, we'll see in front of you, our budgeting by priority of things that we need or want done. And so I wanted to show you that. And then, one of the things that is pretty pressing is the St. Jude's windows, repairs on them, I have some pictures, I could never seen how bad they are.
Go through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, like you can. You can.
I was actually looking in on the inside.
No.
Yeah.
It's not that, it's really exterior.
Greg, have you seen these?
I have seen them.
Okay.
I'm seeing them in person.
Yeah.
Oh. That's, uh, pretty gnarly.
So I'd really ask that when our new budget comes, you know, in October, that we're able to really get moving on this. And I'd also like to see if you guys would go ahead and let me go out for bids, you have the paper, to offer bids.
For which one of these?
The windows.
The windows.
It's, yeah, all of them.
Yep.
And that price there is, like he came up with for all of them. And it's the repair, you know, it's cooking, it's replacing wood, it's, one of those, one of the pictures may have the mortar that's missing above one of them. So there's a lot, I just would like to get to that before snow falls. There's several of them that you can see for sure.
And they're going to end up losing the stained glass if you don't get.
Right, yeah, it needs to be buttoned up and taken care of. I don't think it hurts at this point to go ahead and.
Bid it.
Put it out in the paper, get it bid it and see if other people come forward for the work.
I'll make a motion to allow them to go out for bids for window repairs at St. Jude's.
We have a motion on the floor to allow Parks and Recreation to go out for bids for the St. Jude's window repairs. We have a second. Also, we have a motion second on the floor to allow Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to go out for bids for repairs to the St. Jude's windows. All favor say aye.
Raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, motion carries, you got permission?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so also, you'll see where, you know, for this coming budget here, of course, again, we're going to have to go a little closer to, more in the spring, we'll have to go out for, you know, bids for these different things. Like the basketball court repatement in South Park, I didn't bring that picture, but it's really, really bad. I got a bid for concrete to completely redo it all, and that was $52,000, with a two-inch overlay with asphalt, we can't, they came back with 18.5, so much more economical for that.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Would it be possible for you to get the square footage for that basketball court to Mr. Rodney?
He has, I got it, he's got it. Me, I think about.
You know where I'm going with this? If, if ESS is already going to be here doing streets, they've already got the equipment here, he may be able to do it at the same price or less. And that would be nothing more, if the board so chose, that would be nothing more than a change of.
Change order.
A change order. Would that be a problem if you got it down early?
Oh, no.
Okay, Rodney, would you please?
Yeah.
Get that over to ESS and ask them what the cost that change order would be so we can bring it back to the board. And also, hopefully by then we'll know whether or not we can continue. We need to talk about that during your portion.
Yeah.
About ESS and other issues. We head to her.
Okay. And then you can see the other things that are on there that we're kind of working on for this, for next year.
On the cedar shake, I'm assuming that's supposed to be 21K?
Yes.
Because you're on the seat.
Sorry.
That'd be too easy.
Yeah, it just, yes, right. That person did that out.
Yeah.
And like I said, we haven't heard back from the, to not do cedar shake, but do something similar, but in a metal look, which, I don't know if that would be more expensive or not, but. And, okay, so that's that. The other thing is that we're going to get a real quick North Park update. The pour-in-play surface people will be here, hopefully mid-month, did you say mid-month? To complete their part. So that's kind of what we're waiting on inside there is they're doing the pour-in-play. After that, we have to do sidewalks in the parking areas. So we're working on that right now to figure out if they have to be handicapped accessible going from the parking lot to the pavilion to the playground itself. So we're working on that part right now. And then the last part of it is the restroom plans, which I got word today that they do have some ready for us to look at. That would be those.
Cool.
What's timeframe to have that completed, Matt?
Let's see. Restroom would probably be more like spring, I would say.
Yeah.
We have, I think, a two-year period.
We do.
Yeah, before, you know, to get it all done.
I've worked it out, worked it out for a couple of weeks, I think.
Yes, it does, budget-wise.
May I ask a question? Well, to the North Park project. And that's why I'm not a neurosurgeon. Okay. The existing playground equipment that's in the North Park, is it in bad shape, bad condition?
It's in great shape. We, our last meeting we actually had at North Park, and we toured, you know, we all got on it, looked at it and everything. It's in really good shape. We're working on that right now, we're in the process of figuring all that out, so I'll have to come back and.
Because of obvious question.
I've got a couple of things that we, I think you're asking.
Oh, yeah.
One, we consider, we consider moving it, but if you look at it, the way it's mounted, right, we talked to Rodney, and that's not really practical because you can't move it without tearing it up.
Good point, good point.
And then we also discussed leaving it there, and that's actually what our, our opinion is right now, I think, but we were wanting to verify that that's not going to cause us a problem with the grid, because we did say we were going to remove it, but that was like one of the things that we were kind of asking for to do, and so we're trying to figure out if it's required that we remove it, or if we don't really have to remove
We'd like to leave it where it is.
I think that would be great if you can make that happen.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Because I, I had an opportunity to talk to some, some kids to actually play in that park, and they were confused, why wouldn't we be taking that out?
Right, yeah.
And I said, well, I don't really have a good answer for you.
Yep, we're, we're working on it.
Good, good job, good, 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 I like that.
So I have that they finished placing all the equipment, because I know they were like missing a couple of pieces or something.
We're still looking on that part. The slides or something, I think, was something that was missing. I went over there, I want you to know, I went over there and I inspected every, I did literally, I even come talk to him about if he had any touch-up paint to fix the areas that's been scratched and scraped. But if I was 40 years younger, I'd have probably really enjoyed it.
And on a side note, Rodney has been wonderful to work with. He has just anything I need, and at every single meeting, he's been awesome.
Who's this?
Rodney.
Like that?
He's been wonderful. And the water guy.
Oh, which is like that here at water?
George.
George, power washed, power washed all of the pavil, park pavilions, power washed all of those for us, and he just got one done, right?
Yeah, we just had North Park.
So they've all been power washed, he was very, he was out with that, so it's awesome. All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Matt.
Well, thank you for letting us know the good job these guys are doing. Appreciate that.
And I appreciate you prioritizing things for us, too. That's for good.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, moving right along, Economic Development Tax Board, I don't think there's anything for them tonight. Administration.
At a meeting?
No.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to, do we need to per this chain clock?
Excuse me?
Do we need to per this chain clock? For the playground chain?
Actually, we do, but Rodney was going to bring, Rodney was going to bring that up for you guys.
I guess this is the full amount, like, for the last tax.
Yeah, but Rodney was going to bring that up.
Oh.
For his session. Operations?
Want to summarize?
Me?
Yeah.
I'll let you do it. Church Committee.
Yeah. Did you take notes? Yeah. We went over a few things with the nuisance ordinance and whatnot, and clarified some things on the commercial side of things, for as far as timeframes and whatnot. We didn't, we didn't vote to change anything per se.
Really, the, the discussion centered around the current nuisance ordinances that we have in place. We got an update from the chief of police on activity, on their activity. They are working on these issues. We talked about a couple of homes where we've received multiple complaints from neighbors relative to their condition, their belief that the properties, you know, may be unsafe. We're in contact with Bob Altizer, our building inspector slash commissioner. He is working with the chief of police, as well as the city attorney, to see what actions we can take going further to address two properties on First Street.
East Dover.
I'm sorry, Dover, West Dover.
East Dover.
East Dover. We'll get it right here. All over the place here tonight. East Dover, thank you. And see, see where that goes. And when I say that, the actions that we're looking to take are actions that have been requested by the homeowner. So if you recall that conversation we had, that's all I've got.
Oh, and also you mentioned that there have a total of 58 nuisances that they're working on, 50 of them being properties, eight of them being vehicles, and they have gotten rid of some very nuisance order homes or something too.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we, we, we have to remind ourselves from time to time is that these processes are slow, it takes a lot, it's slow, it's a slow process, and the laws that are in place, statutes that are in place, and orders that are in place, all taking consideration the rights of the homeowner, the property owners. And that's good, that's a good thing, that, that government, you know, it's local city government, is held to a, to a specific standard when it comes to dealing with nuisances and nuisance abatements. And I'll say no more about that. Anything else for operations?
No.
All right. I think we had a really good meeting with the chief. Learned a lot, and came away with a much better understanding than I had before. Now, next thing we have on the agenda is going to be department force. We'll start out with the police department. Hey, Chief.
I have a couple of things. First, we were able to get the Crown Vic rest on a purple wave, or significantly less than we thought. It's coming out to a total of 6,600, so we're just barely to have what we were willing to go. Got till 16 to go pick that up, so we have a couple of officers who are prepared to go, go get that and get it driven back. As everybody's worried, we had a veteran, a great coincidence, one of our officers, anytime there's a situation like that, treat it as an investigation, figure out exactly what happened. Some of that investigation is still ongoing, so I can't speak to a whole lot of, have some causes, but I can't tell you those. Officer Johnson is okay, he is now back home, expected to make a full recovery, still very sore from the ordeal, however, it's a lot better than what was expected. So other than that, that's all I have, is if I have any questions.
What I would like to do, because of this issue, we, you know, we did win, we did win the bid, and we need to separately approve this because it's not on the bills payable. So I would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the Crown Victoria in an amount of 6,000, is this correct, 6,600 or more? 6,600. 6,600. Six thousand six hundred dollars, six thousand six hundred dollars.
Uh, we have a motion to approve that purchase.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the purchase of the Crown Vic in an amount of six thousand six hundred dollars. We have a second. We have a motion, second on the floor, approve the purchase of the, uh, for Crown Victoria Police Interceptor from Blue Wave in an amount of six thousand six hundred dollars. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion is approved. Thank you, chief.
Oh, just one other, no, no details, uh, it's just general stuff. Uh, but I just wanted to make sure that, like, we had thought of, like, if there's any, like, immediate other safety concerns that might have related to that.
There are, uh, there are some areas that we've got for improvement with ourselves and with other agencies. Uh, we're, we're making a bunch of different steps. Uh, at this point, we've got a carbon dioxide detector jaded all cars. Uh, we've started up a different form of location, uh, tracking to be able to do that a little more quickly. So we are finding, finding some areas that we can make improvements on. Uh, as the partners, as digital assets, it's time for break starts and we can make those corrections.
I, yeah, it's been a good year. I've, I've, they were, yeah, we, yes, that's a, that's a little busy.
When we set up the debriefing, tomorrow was closer. All of the responders that were involved, uh, and then we've setting up operational debriefing with, uh, different agencies that were there. So we can all communicate, compare, find where weaknesses are, what went well, but then, and make changes as needed.
I can assure you, the chief, uh, the chief has, has, has come and sat, sat with me and explained to me, um, lessons learned, and I can assure you, they're taking very good positive steps to try to, uh, reduce the possibility of a similar, uh, incident ever occurring again, as well as doing work that, uh, potentially would, uh, become very, very useful, uh, in other potential instances that may occur in the future. I'm very proud of their efforts.
Since we're on there, I would like to thank the community for all of the well thoughts and efforts. Appreciate it.
We're so happy. We're happy. It turned out the way that it did. Very happy. All right, moving right along. We've, we've eliminated water from the agenda, so we'll move right on. Go ahead, George.
That would've been a smart thing.
It's gonna cost me money. Excuse me. Well, I just hate me, I'm actually referring to the city. Please understand that.
Yeah, uh, first things, uh, last week or last meeting, uh, you, uh, said that the, the numbers weren't there. Do you have the numbers now?
Yeah.
Okay. Wanted to make sure you did get them. We, I didn't redo the entire report. I just had the numbers put in. Nothing else changed. And, uh, the administrative assistant, she had, she did have the numbers on her report. For some reason, they didn't transfer them. So, uh, what I just passed out, this is just a draft letter. Uh, it was actually written by the mayor, so when you see on the second page, it says, you know, it was running by the mayor. But, uh, uh, we talked about this last meeting. Chloramines are right around the corner. We have to get a public notice out to the public, uh, prior to us switching over. We also have a public notice that has to go out to the public that is required by DNR for our disinfection byproduct violations. So we have the opportunity to put this, or put a letter very similar to this in with that public notice. So the city doesn't have to pay for two of them. But, uh, before that, what we need is we, we need to, I need to nail down the first yellow date, which is the date that we are going to actually be able to do the switch.
Right.
I'm still waiting on more equipment to come. I can't, you know, nail down a date until I know the equipment is here, and then when I can get it, uh, installed. And then the second one is a meeting, whether the aldermen want to be there or they don't. It really doesn't matter to me. We have to have, uh, at least one public meeting where people can come and ask questions. Um, and, you know, we'll answer what we can. And, uh, I'd actually like to, uh, and I, I haven't talked to the mayor about this, but with Mark Ross now being on, on for the, the other, uh,
Demerging contaminants.
Demerging contaminants, he is also very well versed, actually more does the technical stuff on chloramines than I am. I can tell you how we make them, how we test them and sort of, if there's, if there's, uh, an engineering type of question. It's hard to know that there would be. You know, I'd actually like to maybe see if I would could have him here also.
George, you said you, we have to give public notice regarding the switching to chloramines. And what was it also the, do we have a violation?
Yes, we, we have a, yes, the disinfection byproducts. That is the same public notice that's been going out there before, and that's what the chloramines is gonna sell. So that's why we've been pushing so hard on Black and Beach, trying to get this so we can actually, so we can order the equipment, get moving on it. So it's, uh, it's probably, I mean, I, I'd say we're five months behind where I thought we should be. So, uh, yes, and we will, uh, in the letter, if, when you read it, I, it'll also talk about how we're not gonna be out of non-compliance very quickly. Because it's, it's an average of your last four disinfection byproduct samples. So we sample once a quarter. Right now, our average is one oh six, and we need to be at eighty or below. So we have to get some good samples, but we're getting ready to take a sample. And normally our, uh, second, third quarter are the worst because whenever it's hot outside, chlorine does, you know, uses itself up in the water. June and September are normally our worst. And so there's a chance where our average will actually go up after our September test. But then, once we can get the chloramine started, we should nose dive down. It'll take a while for that average to come off, so it might even be into the third quarter of next year before we do not have to send out. Yeah, because we're, we're sending out the viola- or we're sending out the public notice that actually dates all the way back to last September. And we're sending it out later this month. Because of how there's four, there's four, yeah, we're talking about the September one from last year. Or get it down below the level, we'd be in compliance there. So.
We'll just have to do a really good job, uh, of communicating that, uh, to our consumers. So they understand that we're not, no, this is not what they're drinking.
Yeah. Right, it's, we tried to do that, but the DNR only gives you two lines to write and.
We did our own separate publication.
Yep, I did all due to it in here. So, you know, but I, I sent you an email with this. And I, I said, we need to get together, we need to audit it. But, um, I didn't know if the board wanted to talk about when we may, might want to have a meeting, when and where. Uh, I don't know if it's gonna be a large gathering, a small gathering. I, I don't know what to expect.
You know, I think, uh, I think what we can do, um, do we have, when we have the meeting scheduled, do we at that point in time have to have a precise date that we're switching?
I wouldn't think so.
So we could schedule it anytime?
Yeah, we could schedule it anytime. We just need, we can't switch over until after the meeting. That they will get this public notice in, in with their other.
Can, is there any way that date would ever become a reality?
Yeah, it could.
If everything comes.
Then we need to have a meeting soon.
Yeah.
Has to be what, thirty days prior?
No, no, there's, there's.
No set?
No, they, I, I, I have found nothing that said that it has to be a set distance in between.
But publication.
I was just gonna ask him if there was a, like a seven day window after you publish, you could have a meeting, I would say. I would assume, just to know.
You know, all the, all DNR says is you have to, you have to, uh, notify the public with, uh, public meetings and public notice.
We can go ahead and do the public notice and go ahead and do the, uh, public meeting. And we can give them a timeframe that could be, that we expect is that in between October one of twenty twenty-five and December one of twenty twenty-five. Or something along those lines. Of course, we would rely upon your expert guidance as to what that window should be like. Because after all, we're not doing this.
Yeah, 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 it's, uh, yeah, I, I'd be comfortable with, with that. Um, and as I told you before, we, uh, we, we need to put down a date and say, or actually maybe not give the window. Put a date and say, we will, this is the earliest we'll be switching over. You don't actually have to give them the date that you do switch over. Not, not, and you're not trying to be, you know, elusive or anything. It's just that there's.
Okay.
Yeah, because I might say we might switch over on October fifteenth, but it's gonna take a week or so for us to get the water to town and react with what the chlorinated water and all the switching rounds to happen.
Let's get together, you and I, we'll re-edit this, we'll put in a, at, an earliest date.
Yeah.
Explanation.
And figure it out.
And figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
But I just want to talk to you guys about the meeting that no one wanted to talk about, uh, because we can't send out the disinfection byproduct public notice until we have the meeting date. So that we can add this public notice to it, or do we want it, when is the next any coming?
The eighteenth, but there's a lot stuck on that eighteenth.
Once we notify DNR by the, like, the end of the first week of October, we have to show them that we did send out the public notice. So, but that takes printing it, stuffing the envelopes, and getting it mailed out to a hundred percent of our customers.
Narrow that down. We need to have a public meeting when? By when?
Well, it's anytime after we get it published and.
Yeah, we just need to have the date to put in this letter so we can shove it into the envelopes. So we can do it on, we can do it, uh, my first week gone in October. Yeah, I'm gonna be gone almost this whole week, that first week, so I, or the next second week, I guess. So if we can do it the first week of October, we can do it the third week of October.
Only do.
It won't be, it won't be because Thursday is on the second.
Or we wouldn't have this meeting during our council meeting.
My.
I would.
You wouldn't?
I wouldn't either. It, it may take ten minutes and be done.
Yeah.
What about Thursday the second?
Yeah, Thursday the second works.
How about you, Thursday the second for a special meeting?
Sure.
Well, actually, it's a public hearing is what it is, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's public.
There's no actual.
We don't do it.
No action, no, 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 it's simply informative to.
Do we have to have a quorum?
No.
No.
Awesome, do it the second, October second.
Mark that on your, on here. Change that to October second.
And that's Thursday?
Yes.
Well, this, this is the, this is for switching, uh, the meeting.
Meeting on October second.
Public meeting, is that what you call it?
That's January.
Oh, that's January, so it is, uh, it is a Thursday, October second is Thursday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, George, help to get that done.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we can do this tomorrow or do this this week. Yeah, I'll, I'll give you some time to read it and mark it up, and then I'll tell you why we can't do that, so.
That's what you're getting paid for.
That's right. Uh, with the equipment is, uh, is arriving. We have the pumps, uh, for the, uh, for the mono-chloramines. We have the free and total analyzer that's required for that. We have the, uh, the field unit to test, uh, free chlorine and mono-chloramines out of the system. Uh, we're waiting on mission systems to come in. And I don't think that's, and the scale, I'm waiting on that in order to be able to actually, once that comes in, ordering the chemical that will be here in the next week, we'll be ready to go. So, actually, no, I, I'm waiting on the piping to come, so I can do pipe. And that's something else that, uh, the mayor and I discussed. We've been having a lot of requests for, uh, bulk water sales. And, uh, I don't know if you recall a while back, the board said to squash all, uh, all that. Just because going out, putting that, that meter on the hydrant, selling and then keeping track of everything was really a pain. While I'm repiping the interior part of the plant, it's a two-way pipe. I could blow that out the wall, I could put a bulk station at the water plant, and it'll be available anytime anybody, uh, if somebody is there, if we're there.
That'd be gonna be stacked.
Exactly, yeah. We will be the ones turning the valve, we'll be turning off the valve. I made some suggestions to the mayor on, on pricing, and we can address that later. I just want to let you know that I'm gonna make a stub, and I gotta come back with a price, cause it's gonna be, you know, uh, upwards of five hundred dollars to get this installed. And, uh, but once I get it, you know, and I will let you know what the cost is, and then you can tell me whether to proceed or not. So just kind of give.
This is yours, this tank reading? Oh, that's, okay. Didn't know who, where this came from. I didn't know what it was. What tank?
Um, and, and just last thing, if you noticed, uh, a slight taste over in your water, we had a, a bad algae bloom last week. We got right on it with copper sulfate, but we had about a day and a half where, uh, there was a smell. Yeah, and mostly in your hot water is where you probably smell it the most. Uh, or that's where I smell it the most. I don't smell it in cold water. When I turn the hot water on, it just.
The shower.
Yeah, in the shower, you'll smell it real bad. But, uh, it should have dissipated by now. Um, but yeah, it, uh, it, it was bad. Just by recall, so. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much, George.
You're welcome.
Electric department?
Hello, everyone.
Oh, hey, Justin.
Hey, you should have, uh, the DNR. You know, this from the last couple of weeks, uh, we continue to cut trees. Uh, that's gonna be an ongoing process for the next two, three months. Uh, we're making headway. It's looking better. After the trees get trimmed, we'll start full changeouts. We've done some full changeouts now, and I'm, I'm, they're very critical. But consistent full changeouts will start after we get the trees trimmed. Another goal we're working on is to switch over the AMI meters, which is the smart meters. Uh, we've gotten quite a few done now, and we're down to twenty-eight, twenty-eight meters left. Most of our businesses, uh, that require an outage, so we're trying to schedule things with the businesses, make sure that they're not affected by this meter changeout, so.
That's like, uh, Thursday the second.
Yeah, it's like a minute, but if it's a business and they're, and they're just constantly busy, we gotta be careful.
Yeah.
Before we just go kill a battery or if they're cash registered or working.
So at that time, like, cash register is all clear nowadays, so that stuff takes a while to get.
Right, right. So I was thinking of maybe some of them, like, the Mark Twain Shopping Center is the main one. Just doing it on after hours.
It's built to taste the work.
At the same time. But there's twenty-eight left. Most of the businesses that, uh, I think we, we have to order a few more meters, but then we should be caught up with the old meter where there's not a lot left. And I'm not sure if it was budgeted, uh, last year for the meters, or was it a capital expense? I, I don't know.
So what's that?
Were the meters budgeted already? Is this smart meters?
The smart meters?
Uh, I would have to, I would have.
I think we've kind of budgeted some these years where we've been doing.
Yes, um, but I, I don't have in front of me the answers yet. I don't know what the, what the amount was.
Do we need to order more? We can't even order.
Okay.
I can get a list.
Give me the list of price, and then we'll come back and take a look at it.
Okay.
But I think, uh, every move that we make towards getting this, uh, metering automated, that's my, that's my phrase, automated. We don't have to have boots on the ground to read these meters.
We're close to getting them finished, and then, of course, there's gonna be some ones we have to go back that they're, the towers just aren't reading the meters properly. So, uh, so we have some different style meters that work on cell tower that'll be able to read. So once we clean all that up, I hope we get to zero, you know, where zero re-reads, everything can be done.
Regarding industrial, um, the customer, the, I don't know, I don't know anything about, it's the reason why I'm asking. Um, what about the, what about the demand meters?
I don't know. I'll get back.
Are we gonna still have to read those manually?
We shouldn't. I mean, I think.
If that's a, if that's a Dan question, give him a call. I'll talk to him, I'll talk to him this season.
I think these are meters that we have, we should be able to. uh make them same with the other.
See I don't know how the demand meters I don't know how the uh demand meters work I just don't know anything about it.
Yeah I'll get back with you.
Alright sounds great.
I I think we can get them all changed. With the the water uh there's that app the aisle of water app where you can keep them out on your meter is there something like that for the electricity? Um some insurance companies have some voltage detectors that they're using this without a problem out of forty but a customer that had a voltage monitor monitor system and caught a bad transformer.
And I think what you're referring to and Justin what he referring to uh if I'm understanding correctly we can those of us who are signed up we can go online see our daily water use water usage we see peaks and valleys we can see a graph.
Totally.
Is there something like that for electric is what he's asking?
I'm not sure vision of where we have access to it because I haven't seen on there but we can check voltage uh address whether they're open or closed.
I'm sure there's a way we can.
Just on is there a customer?
There's an app that's on my phone and I had to put in like my oh wait take me until they go with their my account and all that my name and all that and then it keeps tracking my water usage and that dates every so often.
Actually breaks it down to fifteen minutes now.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm sure with these meters that they can do a lot of things.
We just may not be taking advantage of it.
I don't know yeah.
Good question. Good question.
How we found out about the water? Round water.
It's handy.
A couple of other projects that we finished de-energizing that south leak line uh to the pump house it's we've been jumping on so if it does need to be energized again we can energize it pretty easily uh but as far as right now it hasn't been in service uh there's just a a bank out there at the pump house and then once we got past the last house on the line we just went ahead and cut it open so that was almost a mile of line that was beating nothing uh through trees things like that so it's uh gonna save us a lot of line loss of a mile of line not being used and uh
Also you're committed here to keep your front of tree fall that part of the line.
And not gonna hold that. So uh easy to turn around and energize it back again so.
How much of a savings would you I mean is there any way?
I don't know I don't want to find the savings uh as far as outage and.
Yeah.
Public uh opinion it saved a lot.
Yeah.
Also the jumper also at Windsor Station industrial stuff lost the transformer uh they did a bunch of switching around getting the subs a back feed to feed the rest of the customers from Baker Street so well in the process they did they just they didn't get all of it finished uh so I spent a lot of time tracking it down making sure that these jumpers needed to be removed or if they could be removed and we determined they could uh they were it's temporary jumper it was not a permanent thing so we removed them which de-energized another mile of line that went all the way back to the sub uh that doesn't need to be energized it's more of a backup it's for uh the two-way feed so you can feed one sub to the other sub. Uh it's handy to have it and 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 but it doesn't need to be hot all the time. So it's de-energized now.
But it's there if we were to ever.
It's there if we need it. And due to I did we started a three-phase pad mount uh inventory we got like there's like ten left to just record the voltage but what my plan is with this is I want to know how many pad mount three-phase customer or business-based transformers we have so we can purchase backups so what I want to do is right now I'm at forty-two so forty-two three-phase pad mount transformers mainly businesses we don't have any backups we have nothing that in case we lose one we'd have to wait for places so I want to try to find a universal voltage uh K D A size that fits so we can if this business goes out we can put this one there till we send this one in and get it fixed this business goes out we can put that one there so it works for several things so I was thinking and we're gonna add to the budget we're probably about four transformers that would cover us you know uh in case of a failure.
That's good because the one thing that uh has happened in the past is 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 we've had uh failure and and found that we weren't adequately uh prepared uh to deal with those failures I'm pleased to hear that you're uh being retroactive and and looking at uh everything from a from a uh perspective of of potential risks and give us an opportunity to be prepared to prepare for it.
Yes and uh I know these few transformers are expensive that's the reason uh upwards of ten thousand dollars per transformer these these big transformers and so it's hard to have a backup for you can't no no company has a backup for every transformer.
Right.
They just have some kind of a universal plan that gets them by until they can get it repaired and set in and replaced. Um during the transformer inspection we discovered uh some three-phase sexualizing cabinets which sexualizing cabinet is a it's a box that the cables three-phase underground cables come in and they go out it's just a way that you can access these wires and build another service off of but they weren't installed correctly so there was big gaps in them so this is underground twenty-four hundred volt wire and there's big holes in it that anybody could reach in and grab it so we covered all these up we cleaned them up we got mounted properly uh one of them was laid over uh a mower in it or it was installed that way.
Was that out without out the.
All of these are more quick shopping center but they're all cleaned up now they're all fixed and uh yeah there's one of the things we thought had we did with transformation while on the line.
What did you do on the what did you do on the doors relative to these cabinets how did you secure those?
Uh we use locks uh temporary locks so these just get cut off of the bolt wire uh every pad mount transformer should be locked and should be bolted so there's a bolt that that goes into the transformer that locks the lid down so we lift these lids up so we can work have access to the transformer. Uh close the lid you tighten a bolt and you put a lock on it uh it needs to be a lock that just can't be.
Oh they all secure now?
Yes everyone's secure that I'm aware of unless there's some I missed but uh yeah we spent a lot of time going through.
Ah yes.
None of them had locks on them uh I mean they were all just wide open so we've got them all locked up now and uh we'll continue to we see one that's missing one we'll get a lock.
The uh one out back here uh was one of the issues that was brought to our attention a couple of weeks ago and I asked him to go out there with me to take a look at it and when we got out there the issue already been taken care of it had a pad on on it so I thought that was kind of interesting.
Well when I first started I noticed that we did inevitably have locks there so as I waited for the locks to come in we just put meter seals on them which is just a little wired seal that covers it but at least it's somewhat secure uh but not a hundred percent secure so the ones that are left over that are the ones that we might have missed is the meter seals and are bolted so they're secure now but we just waiting on the locks to come in it took like sixty locks was a lot. Uh we gotta get all that stuff locked up.
It's amazing to me that somebody secured or somebody had gotten one of those and gotten hurt it just it's amazing to me. Alright.
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Full change out. Good today but that was the outage of the pole but we planned for six hours but we got that four hours yeah and so the golf course pole uh pump house pole we called it which was you could almost put your fist all the way through it and that hit we gotta change that.
The uh other work that they did out in that area was they cleared out all that trees and stuff uh under all those lines that go out to that subdivision I'm hoping hopeful that the uh frequency of issues out there is going to be substantially reduced thank you Justin.
You'll all hear about it on Facebook if it's not.
The long-term plan is to remove that wire that goes through the water right away because we have two lines that go through right away so I want to remove this line keep this line and feed the golf course a different way uh and then you'll get this older wire that's it's not big enough for one and it's just and it's uh something that we don't keep in stock it's an older outdated wire just get it gone out of the right away and have a cleaner right away that has bigger wire better feature and that was that's the plan that's why we set two poles instead of one there so we in the future we can go back move our bank and then come in with new wire to the pole to another pole.
Great to know.
Okay awesome. You guys are doing a great job thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next we have gas and uh let's see Terry here so we move right along the street.
Well but but the the chain for the swings it wasn't five hundred dollars we got to deal with eight. That's today actually I'll have to tax up there too.
Okay. So anyway um is this the actual total eight eighty?
What section?
Mike?
Uh ten.
Oh because we have eight hundred minus.
Is that what it was? I'm getting I had a grid come up. Man you know the picture and I thought it was five hundred.
But yeah that's what it was but uh it's three hundred dollars worth of shit but uh it's it's a hundred pounds.
And I know it's heavy.
It's freight.
That's right.
Yeah it's freight so anyway.
Rates got changed yesterday. Thirty-seven forty without the tax and and anyway that's what we left going.
So anyway what we have in front of us is the invoice for eight uh excuse me a quote for eight hundred and eight hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents so I entertain a motion to approve expenditure of eight hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents for chains or the swings at the park plus the sales tax.
Do we want to subtract the sales tax from that? Be seventy-fourty without tax.
Oh we don't pay sales tax.
That's why I wanted to exclude it.
Is anything else gonna change on this?
Oh.
Well all the rise that we uh purchased up to the eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
That'll cover it we'll let uh downstairs uh send them the notification that we don't pay tax and we have to send them a form. We have most on the floor approved up to eight hundred dollars uh in expenditures for chains for the park we have second.
Jason.
We have most second on the floor approved the expenditure of up to eight hundred dollars for the chains for park swings all in favor please say aye raise your hand. All opposed say no or nay and say raise your hand eyes have most of Terry's approved.
It's not gonna be a third bucket.
Okay.
Five gallon bucket.
Put a load to the fork but that ain't never probably been. Uh the only other thing I got is uh the hot mix from Rose I've been working with George here we had a little lake and manhole covers get them up for when we come and uh it's just easier to just go over top of the fly out. Now George needs it.
Yeah.
I think that we kind of worked out he thought it was gonna be delayed more it sounds like maybe they'll move it up anyway I talked to the S A E S S guy they talk like they have some and he's looking around George and the deal decides is George wants to get them if they get them make sure they work and then just be a change of order if we go back.
If we end up getting the uh manhole cover risers from E S S it will involve uh a change order uh and that cost for those manhole covers is probably gonna be somewhere neighborhood fourteen thousand.
Yeah I I I just counted on the number uh so actually it'll probably gonna be closer to ten.
Closer ten thousand dollars so um.
Plus the basketball payment.
Yeah and and we want to get a basketball change that'd be additional change order and and.
An application.
No if you know if he can't do it cheaper than the other quote then we probably won't do it obviously but it seemed to me if he's already here typically those quotes include uh.
Mobilization yeah.
More things.
Like nineteen.
Mobilization so.
Time to do it.
It'd be perfect it'd be perfect.
Yeah mobilization.
So you get that get that back.
We're waiting on the manhole risers and the manholes or just the risers?
The risers just just the risers you have the lids are already there you just remove the lid with the riser again and then the lid goes right right. Fit yeah I just want to make sure that quit that they fit. Now I ask Terry if he had any problems. He thought he was all clear. I have a lead.
I'm guessing.
Yeah for uh I'll need to have.
Two or three um alright.
Besides that we worked on South Lake yesterday and I know we all drive around and.
Ah gravel.
We got a little bit out there uh we got some compliments already we had enough to do the whole two miles around do some parking areas we're gonna go back tomorrow kind of run out of time and I got probably forty fifty ton lap to do some parking areas the main park and then the yeah it turned out real good.
Awesome.
Thank you very much uh I'm sure people much appreciate it. Alright uh building inspector you got a report uh in the pack for building inspector?
Yeah.
Uh airport there's a uh uh documentation here on the fuel status uh Mosswood uh we're going to be approaching um a brief contract review but I need to go back and take a look at my records um on that. Uh the pool uh we still need to get back together uh after operations has a a discussion I guess on um formally assigning a responsibility to pool maintenance hopefully we'll have that our next uh next meeting. Next we have on here is uh presentation bills and approval payments uh should be uh tab twelve or under tab twelve I believe.
Any idea what that uh twenty-one fifty-four is that doesn't have any?
Show me show me show me show me.
There's an invoice here.
With no description or vendor or anything. Towards the top.
Uh I cannot answer that question.
I can tell you're.
Wow I didn't even notice that.
Is that thing about for twenty-one fifty-four even?
Uh the uh entire
There's no.
Packet is downstairs I could go get it um and find out.
I believe that was for the air screen one oh two.
One oh two?
To the fog or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright thank you chief. Alright.
Most of the work.
Just funeral.
There was Dwight.
That's what I was gonna say.
Where we at?
Says most of the work.
Office expense funeral.
Which is the only one Dwight.
Uh that is what was sent uh to um Mr. Turner's uh churches. Justin's dad.
Oh okay.
Yes thank you.
Yeah I believe it was a I can't remember what it was but the like a little statue or something like that I think I can't remember what it was just not following that. That's fine you did fine you did fine that's what that was for.
Well I'll make a motion to uh through the council payable as presented.
We have a motion on the floor to approve council payable we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion a second on the floor to approve section four point twenty-five council payable all members say aye raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed say nay raise your hand eyes have motion carries council payables are approved. Uh next we have on the agenda is unfinished business there is no unfinished business uh I will make a quick report though um that the uh resolution that the board passed uh we're working on getting all that stuff together we got the uh finalized the drafts and printed out uh the cards that you had to fill out and sign and turn in to the uh city clerk prior to a meeting uh I spoke to A and F they're working on a design uh that will have the rules rules of decorum uh printed on the sign and we'll put over there right above where we will have the uh visitor sign up sheets sign up cards so that's that's that.
What is the name of that resolution I don't even it's not public participation in this public.
Oh gosh uh citizen participation in public forum.
Yeah.
So next thing we've got is a closed session. So next thing we've got is a closed session. We would need to have a motion to go into closed session.
We have a motion to go into closed session, uh, to RS MO six one zero point two two one.
We have a motion on the floor to go into executive session pursuant to RS MO six one zero point three two three.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second on the floor. We go into executive session pursuant to RS MO six one zero point three two three. Hiring, firing, discipling or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee discussed or recorded by a voice. We'll call, yeah. Alden Simpson? Alden. Alden Snyder?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries. We're now in executive session.